Okay, we're going to call the meeting in order. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Mr. Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Accept the motion to reconvene.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, we reconvene now. Accept the motion to reconvene.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Approval of the minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the journal minutes proceedings of March 13, 2018.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I talked to Mark about this. On the second page it has...
Mr. Brewer?
I'm sorry. On the second page it has the Thomas Club, the senior committee, it has the Thomas Club. I don't think that should be the Thomas Club. We don't have, well, they don't have a Thomas Club. I think they were talking about the leisure timers.
Okay. Any other corrections? All right. I would like to call a roll for the minutes to be approved with those necessary corrections. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Motion is failed. Public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to this business of Sawt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate or counter or reply to rebuttals. Please state your name.
Judy Cast here. This is basically pointed out to the trustees, mainly the three trustees that always vote yes. We have multiple things that have been voted on without consideration of the entirety of what's going on. And one of those issues is the removal of Sherri Jazinski. She was suspended for something trivial and now she is gone supposedly. Her title and her department is being deleted. That hasn't been before the board. And we, the people, predicted exactly what would happen and that it would be renamed and go under, be run by Joseph Wizwati, who's been running it since Sherri left. All this without going through the board and nobody's asking any questions. We, the people, also predict your next move, Mayor. And we predict that the next move is to get rid of Mr. Mohan and put the treasurer in in his spot. A treasurer with a checkered past. You also gave her an $8,000 increase in pay a year, which came from Mr. Mohan's salary, which is illegal and can't be done while the budget is still in the middle of the budget. But it was done, all without the board, again. We, the people, feel that things are not going according to the way you promised things during your campaign. Everything you screamed and yelled about at David Hanks is now being done twofold or threefold by you. We don't like it. Why did you ask for an increase in the sewer funds when the sewer fund has more than enough money to pay for what needs to be done and still have money left over? But the board approved it, but nobody asked about the money and what are we going to do with the money that's sitting there that can pay for this in full? There is a paper I have that indicates that the mayor refused to let the trustees have a copy of the employee's handbook. And it was revised in 2017. Again, another violation. You're sitting up there as voted trustees. You got this, you went through the same trial and everything that the mayor did to get where he's at. And yet you're sitting there bowing your heads or nodding your heads whenever it's deemed necessary without checking all avenues. And if need be, we, the people, will keep the feds on speed dial and watch our money.
First of all, I do not and will not discuss personnel matters in open session. Second of all, the sewer funds was presented by our engineer, why we raised them. We had a special meeting for that and it was unfunded mandates that were imposed upon the village by the state that we had to oblige by, by a certain period of time. And that was talked about at the special meeting that was held. So it was not something that was just brought up at the last minute. And as far as that department, it was consolidated. Next.
Linda Washington, I would like to know if trustee Bernice Brewer was removed from office of the senior committee? And if she was, why was she removed? It seemed like the senior committee was one of the only committees that was really moving forward with one of the trustees being the liaison with the committee. Two Fridays a month, they have recreation so that the seniors can come and fellowship and play music and play cards and have an outlet here in the village. And for her to be removed and can no longer talk to the seniors to keep that program engaged as well as some other things that the senior committee was talking about doing, we just want to know on behalf of Sawt Village for public awareness if trustee Brewer was removed from the senior committee and why? Also, we would like to know if any of these trustees that have committee meetings will let us know how many people are on your committee, when you meet, and if you have minutes available from your meetings. We will be forwarding that so if you can prepare to get ready, you should see that coming to the clerk or whoever's the foyer person on next week. When your committee meets, how many people are on your committee? And if you're getting paid to have committee meetings and you only have you yourself and maybe one other person at that committee where you are being paid $125? I've been through the village today from one end to the other, asking residents if they've had any kind of communication. I talked about two months ago that we no longer have the Sawt Talk. There's no communication with the residents in the library and the stores or any other entity where they can find out what's happening other than going on the internet. There are certain residents that do not have computers. They cannot go and see the webpage. They need something that can let them know what is going on in the village. At Strausberg School, at Rick Over School, and Wagner School, approximately each one of those schools, and the clerks on that board have 500 students. At Little Trail, the freshmen, the sophomore, the juniors, and the seniors, we have approximately 600 students that trail. That's approximately 2,000 young people in this village and that graduated, that were 18 to 21, that have recently graduated in this village. So 21 years and under, we have approximately 2,500 youth in this village with not one program in place for them and they're going to be out for 70 days. 30 days in June, maybe they're going to have snow days to make up three or four. 31 days in July, and some parents are going to bring students back to after-labor day. What are you going to do for the youth for 70 days? We have all this money we're giving to people, but I wish you would take that money and invest it in programs for our youth. And finally, holy praise churches, have a prayer every day from 1:00 to 2:00. I would like to invite and advise you all, you need to go.
I will answer the question about senior committee. I appointed trustee Brewer and I unappointed her. That was my call. At no time did I say that she could not talk to seniors. Next, who's, anyone else?
I have a public comment. Mr. Mayor, I understand that, oh, sorry, Bernice Brewer, resident, trustee. Okay, it's evident that you're not going to let the trustees speak on anything. It is unfair for the residents and also for yourself to make, to know that trustees have a view other than yours. I think I was removed from the senior center because of personal issue with Sherri Jazinski, the community development person, but that's my opinion. But I want to know, when are you going to put back public comments on, I mean, for trustees on the agenda? I mean, we have some stuff to say that might be helpful to you. And then we might have some questions that we need to ask the different department heads. We need to be able to speak and communicate with residents about issues that's going on that have absolutely nothing what you answered in all the questions. So I implore you and implore all the trustees that you have, you should have a voice to let the residents who voted for you, give them a chance, give trustees a chance to talk. You might not agree with everything, but you need to let us talk about things that the residents want to hear about. All these residents don't come to you. You know, they come to us because we are more accessible to you. It's not because you're not there, it's that sometimes they see us, they live in our neighborhoods and whatever and stuff. But you need to let trustees talk. You might not agree, but that's what we're here for. We've got six people, we've got six different minds, and we need to know how to talk to people.
Answer to your question. Every second and fourth Tuesday of the month, we have board meeting. You have a committee. At your committee report, you're going to report on whatever it is that you would like to report on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I thought you said no debate, no rebuttal.
Trustee.
Linda Todd, resident and trustee. You just said that we could report on our committee. We have other things to bring up that, by you taking off those remarks, there's things that the residents need to know and we need to know. So here is my questions. The statement of work that was passed for our HR person, was it passed, did you put that through our attorneys? Did you run it by our attorneys, that statement of work? Our attorneys all of a sudden disturbed.
Are you answering me a question or?
I'm asking, okay, I'm going to get, I'll go through my questions. I'd also like to have a copy of all the job duties that were put on the treasurer to warrant an $8,000 raise when she was only here a couple of months. So you had to have duties in order to give her a raise. I also would like to see the job duties that you removed from our finance director where you reduced his salary. We were also advised several months back for Casparica Associates that we would see a report on what their findings were. I'd like a copy of that report. And that ends my comments.
I always thought I couldn't ask a question.
Oh, I see, you said no debate.
Well, I was trying to answer your question, trustee, and I was trying to give you an intelligent answer, but you told me that, but I will answer trustee Todd as far as statement of work. We do have that. As far as the treasurer's job duties, we do have that. That's a matter of record. All you do is come in and ask for that, finance director, the reason why, that is already, that is also in writing and you get a copy of that. So these things you ask for do exist, but you can come in, we're here, as you know, you're here, and you see, I see, all you do is ask.
I simply asked the question for the statement of work. Was it put to our attorneys? Did our attorneys review the statement of work?
Statement of work for what reason, trustee?
Because what you're, what, it makes no difference what reason. Was it put through our attorneys?
There, that particular department, yes, it was, a long, long time ago.
The statement of work for the HR position?
The HR position was put through the attorney.
Not the position. The statement of work that was just passed.
I was looking at it because I think it was too. Yes, ma'am.
Heidi Parker, my comment is to the trustees.
Is this a comment or a question?
This is a comment.
Thank you.
And a request at the same time. You were elected to represent the people. I ask that you demand to speak and that you represent the people and ask the questions and make your comments and do your diligence duty and your responsibility. Thank you.
I would like to report that I had an incident last night at my home that I'm upset with because you have funds for all these new jobs and people that don't have these qualifications that I'm upset with. But anyway, you are saying that you are going to be putting out people to check on these dogs that are running wild? Last night, two pit bulls came into my yard, up onto my porch, and a second pit bull was trying to jump my four-foot-high fence to get into my yard. Now, there are rules that are supposed to have been, people are supposed to have licenses for these dogs. I did call the police. The police came and they did get the dogs out of my yard. But somebody needs to find funds somewhere to issue tickets for all these dogs that are running wild before they attack a child, a senior, or whoever. Two large pit bulls on the street last night at 8:30. They were chased down the street because they have no way of capturing the dogs and to take them somewhere that they need to be taken. But these are vicious dogs. We have ordinances in place and you need to find some funds somewhere to address these dogs that are running wild.
Any more questions? Any more comments? Item number six, reports of officers. The mayor's report. I would like to appoint Mr. Ron Carter for the office of the vacancy of trustee Jones. And I'd like to ask the board for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, the second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Andrew.
Motion is carried.
He said yes.
Mr. Congress, please come forward and get sworn in.
Mr. Carter, would you please raise your right hand?
Yes, ma'am.
And repeat after me. I, Ronald P. Carter III, hadn't been appointed to the office...
Haven't been appointed at all.
...of village trustee in the village of Sawt Village...
The village of Sawt Village.
...in the counties of Cook and Will of Forests. Do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
I will faithfully discharge.
...the duties of the office of village trustee...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the village of village trustee.
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Fantastic.
Congratulations. Thank you. Ma'am.
You want to shake hands? Shake hands.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Congratulations. Thank you. Ma'am. That's your say. for a motion.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Mr. Brewer.
I'm sorry. You forgot me.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Carter?
Yes. Okay. Again, motion is carried. Mr. Farmer, would you please come up? And this term is from 2000, May 1st, 2018, to April 30th, 2022. Twenty-two. Should be a four-year. It was three years? Okay, but you have 2022. So it is 21. Okay.
Mr. Farmer, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? We're looking at the State of Illinois. So I would like for you to say, I, Emmett Farmer, hadn't been appointed to the office of zoning board of appeals commission in the village of Sawt Village, in the county of Cook and Will, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of zoning board of appeals according to the best of my ability. Subscribed and sworn to and before me this eighth day of May, 2018. Mark Campbell Brewer, village clerk.
Mr. Mayor, can we confirm or see which one of these dates are correct because I know there are two different commissioners, but one says 2022.
I know, and I was just informed it's 2021. That was the title, I imagine.
So moved.
Congratulations. Okay. commission.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Point of clarification, Mayor. We were just confirming with the clerk that it's actually May 1st of 2018 to April 30th of 2023, not 2021, is listed in the agenda.
Okay.
Because it's a five-year term.
2023.
Maybe make that direction on a later date because of current conditions, it's heavily related to that. So can you...
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going on what you told me. Yeah, another question. So, Mr. Farmer, for item 2, 6A2, want to fill in two zoning board of appeal commissioners. So he's the, he's one. Is there somebody else?
Yes, it was, but he's not here, so I became appoint, I mean, we can't swear him in, he has to get sworn in at a later date and then voted on at a later date.
Just one minute.
Okay. So are we clear with the date?
It's three years.
Okay, so that'll be 2021. Okay. I'll accept the motion.
I think you had a motion in the second round. I think I should do.
Oh, okay. Todd and Brewer, okay. Call the little man.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Ms. Ross, would you please come up?
I, Linda Ross, having been appointed to the office of Sawt Village Police and Fire Commission in the village of Sawt Village, in the county of Cook and Will, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Police and Fire Commission. And it's sworn before me this eighth day of May, 2008, village clerk. Congratulations.
Congratulations. [applause][1785.73] Thank you again, congratulations. This is, I'm thinking this is your fourth term?
Yes, ma'am. Your fourth term.
Mm-hmm.
Going on twelve years.
That's going on twelve years.
Where's the money?
Okay, um, a couple other things. Um, one, on Saturday, April twenty-eighth, Saw Village had a community-wide cleanup day. We had a great turnout of volunteers for the event. Over seventy people were in attendance and helped make this event very successful. We worked all morning and collected over three hundred bags of garbage. It was amazing to watch the businesses and residents of all ages working together to help clean up our community. Members of our local businesses and residents worked together to help clean up our community. There were a lot of work to be completed and everyone pitched in to help. We already planned our next community-wide cleanup day. But I would like to personally thank the following people for being involved. The Bloom Trail, uh, our junior ROTC, the Bloom Trail National Honor Society members, youth from the Saw Village Community Center Basketball Program, Com Ed brought the breakfast, First Midwest Bank brought the lunch, American Family Restaurant paid for the drinks. Uh, also, US Bank, um, paid for the lunch, the lunches that we had. Walgreens contributed the garbage bags and the water. Public Works came out to help pick the trash up after the event. And then also Village Treasurer Judy Sufflin, trustee Beth Zupan, trustee Roger Grant, and trustee Cecil Tate. I would also like to thank everyone who contributed and made this cleanup day a success. Thank you guys very much. Um, I have something here from Bud Ambulance. Um, they're, they're pleased to announce we are currently accepting applications for the June or in August, two thousand eighteen EMT class. We are excited to offer this program. An office, office of employment will be available upon successful completion of this program. The basic EMTB program is a prerequisite for advanced life support or paramedic training. For persons interested in a career in EMS, this is a wonderful opportunity. Candidates must possess good study and academic skills. The class is scheduled Monday through Thursday from nine to one. If you know anyone in either of the villages that would be interested in a career in EMS, we would like for you to recommend them for this class. Please have the prospective student bring this letter to our office no later than May seventeenth. The class is limited to eighteen, and the prospective student would have to meet all qualification and requirements for admission to the course. I do have the, um, letter of recommendation in the application so, in the qualification, so if anyone is interested or knows someone that is, we'll have them at the front desk at the office. Thank you. Village Clerk, Mayor, uh, Mark Campbell Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things that I would like to, uh, bring to your attention. First, I would like to say that Student Government Day was very successful. The youngsters truly enjoyed their time here with us, and I would like to thank each and every one of you for working with the youngsters and having them shadow you. They were enamored by you. In fact, at Friday's luncheon where they received their certificates of participation, they asked about you. Where is the chief? Where is the fire chief? Where is the police chief? They really, really were impressed with you, and I say thank you very much for that. I want to, I guess I'm starting off light before doing the heavy hitters, and maybe I should be doing it the other way. But the other thing I want you to note is that there is a new food pantry in the village. So the village now has three food pantries. The difference with this one is rather than people having to come during the daytime, they will be able to come in the evening from four to six o'clock at Grace United Church of Christ. And we serve five different zip codes, so that food pantry serves Lansing, Hazel, not Hazelcrest, but Richthood Park, University Park, Crete, Steger, and naturally, six zero four one one. Now, I'm going to ask that you refer to the document that looks like this. Normally, I give a four-year update once a month, and this is my month, and I'm going to invite you to move down on the left side to the date starting eighteen, well, the four-year number eighteen dot zero three thirty, because that is when this period started. And that will let you know the four-years that have been received and therefore has made two requests from us, um, within this past month. One, they wanted the settlements from two thousand ten that dealt with any criminal justice, police misconduct, and et cetera. The other thing they wanted to know was the full payroll expenditures for two thousand seventeen. They wanted information like the salary, overtime, holiday pay for staff, as well as elected officials. We have a resident that she really questioned the same thing two or three different times, but each time they had to be answered. And then we had someone who wanted all of the paid and unpaid invoices from Attorney Lab. Uh, the Attorney General has been in communication with, uh, the four-year officer offices, well, and we had to respond to quite a few, um, reviews. And after responding to them, I am pleased to report that in every instance, the case was closed and or unfounded. We have one person who wants minutes from selected meetings, but she's asking for approved minutes, and I just need to be on record stating that minutes that have been done but not approved cannot be released. So it's not a matter of not being transparent, but unless minutes have been approved by this board, I cannot share them with any, anyone. And then, for some reason, a number of people are really interested in Joe Wizwadi's vacation from November, because I received three different requests for that. So they want to know where you've been, why you've been there, how did you get there, did you have fun? Um, and then we were asked for audits for Miller and Cooper, Casperin, and they also asked for audit reports. I figured that if I shared this with you this way, I could go through it more quicker, and you would have it for your reference, so that if there's an item that you see that may be of interest to you, that you would like that information, then you can come, and I can make a copy of it for you. The last thing I want to talk to you about is a document that I put on your desktop that looks like this. And on the front of it, it says the Village Clerk's Office. Because, and I had to do this because someone really suggested that I do it. And that is just take some time and look at the day-to-day operations and the things that I do, because so many times, many people think that all I'm responsible for is taking minutes. And if you read through these responsibilities, you will see that my day-to-day activities are enormous. Absolutely enormous. Much more than really is needed for a part-time position. So therefore, I have been trying to get a deputy clerk. On the backside of the responsibilities for the Village Clerk's Office, I posted scope of a job function if we were to have a deputy clerk. Now, I'm bringing this to you now because I know that it's unlikely that I will be here Saturday when you discuss the budget. And I really would like for you to consider putting in the budget funds for a deputy clerk. And let me tell you why I want that in the budget. If you look at the last sheet, I took a survey of the South and Southwest Cook County Deputy Clerks, and clerks, rather, from our surrounding townships and village. There are thirty-two active members in that organization. Uh, that seventeen responded to my query. And as you look down, you will see that only one township has a volunteer deputy clerk. The vast majority of them are paid, and not only are they paid, but they are full-time as well. Now, I know that we do not collect the revenues that many of these townships collect. However, even though we don't collect the revenues, it does not diminish the fact that the need of the activities are there in order for this village to function. So I'm just, I just thought that I would share this with you and just make an appeal that we find a way to include a part-time deputy clerk and/or if not even part-time, you know, we can come up with the scenario of payment. You know, it could be something like twenty dollars an hour for ten hours a week, something along that line. Know that it's impossible, and I hear some ungraced out there, it's really impossible to get someone to volunteer when they know that they can go someplace else and become a deputy clerk and be paid. So it really depends on how effective you want our village to run. And, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, my, um, well, comment to the Village Clerk, uh, the kids came in on April twenty-fourth, I believe. It was April twenty-fourth when the children came, the students came in. But suggestion from now on, I don't know how you're going, you guys are going to work that. But they shouldn't be here when we have to vote on something. I had questions to ask about the accounts payable. I have been asking ever since, uh, the twenty-fifth, and I haven't got a straight answer yet. So I'm suggesting that they don't come on days when we have to vote for, you know, really special things like account payable. You know, that's a big issue and it's a hot-button issue. So, uh, we need not to disturb the, uh, students because it's a good learning experience for them, and we don't want to get all excited, but the trustees didn't feel, I don't think, at least I wasn't feeling comfortable with, you know, going here, answering these questions, but I knew somebody's going to get upset about it. So I, you know, it would be good for them to come on days that we don't have to vote on things. We voted on the accounts payable that day. Suggestion, that's all.
I, I, and I appreciate that suggestion, and that's something that maybe we can, you know, we have a whole year to work through because they definitely would like to do it again. When I say they, I'm talking about the schools. But we vote on something at every board meeting.
Well, we might need to have them on a committee meeting.
That, that's not them representing us at a board meeting, and all of our other directors and officials, officers are not here at that time.
Well, maybe we might, we might need to set up something special for them because, uh, it's not fair to residents, and it's really not fair for them that we blow all up about a particular issue. So I don't know, you, you guys can work that out, but I'm just saying, I don't think it was fair to the residents who were here uh, because it was questions that needed to be asked, and they weren't asked because the students were here.
I can remember one year, a number of years ago, it did get very intense up here to the point that, that then trustee overachieved removed them. But every year prior to that, there was never a problem. So as I said, we have a year to work through it, and I invite you to serve on that committee so we can explore other options.
Okay, um, Village Engineer, Mrs. Jim Zarnik?
Thank you, Mayor. Before the Board tonight, our agreements for construction engineering for the two hundred twenty-third Street Cornell Road Reconstruction Project. This will be the last documentation required before the project is bid next month. Construction is expected to commence in late summer. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The report's for the Board.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, comment, rather, for, uh, Robinson Engineer. Um, a couple, well, a couple, I guess, weeks ago, you came in and gave a presentation for MWRD. And after, after we do, after I did this research on it, we have been raising the sewer rate since two thousand and six. Now, it's two thousand and eighteen, that's quite a bit of money. Now, uh, we have seven hundred and fifty-six thousand in the sewer fund alone. Now, when you came in, you asked for, uh, manhole replacements, repairs or replacement, which was a hundred ninety-one thousand. And then you asked for a curb, uh, in-place piping, I'm not sure what that is, for three hundred ninety-one thousand. The total was five hundred eighty-two thousand, which you were asking for. And you also asked for, to apply for an Illinois EPA loan. My, my, well, comment to you is, I don't understand why we are asking for a loan, because we already in debt, when we have the money in the sewer fund. And according to Mohaw, this was like last year, he doesn't want the threshold to go under a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. Even if you do this, funded mandate required, that we still would have enough money in the sewer fund. And plus, we getting additional monies. So my, my concern is, why every time we come in here, we have to get a loan for this, a loan for that, when we actually have money in the sewer fund to cover your expenses, whatever expenses it is, for these two objects that's mandated by MWRD? So, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, just, you know, we need to think about, we don't need to borrow money every, every, every time for particular projects. Uh, my second issue is the Osland grant. Now, I noticed in the budget that we have had, um, and I'd like to say, we get these things at the last minute, we can't do our research till a week or two after. We, we get them last minute, because, I mean, just to be on safe side, just to talk to you, because you know I can't call you on the phone, it costs money. But the second thing I want to talk to you about, the Osland grant. Now, I noticed that we got a hundred and five thousand in Osland, we have that money. It took thirty-two thousand dollars for the Robinson Engineer to do whatever your engineer worked, which is fine. But the hundred and five thousand is still on the budget. We have that money. So we only going to get additional, I think it's a hundred twenty-two thousand or something for the Osland grant. Am I right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, um, this, this particular, uh, hundred and five thousand is still on the books for the budget for two thousand eighteen. We already got that money, you know, we got hope, but it's, it won't. You know, we need to put the hundred twenty-two thousand, and we won't get that until we do a final BLR. Am I right?
The project has to be completed before we get reimbursed in the second half.
So it shouldn't be on the budget at all, because we already got that money, that money's, uh, at, at least thirty-two thousand of it is spent. So I don't know what the rest of it is, but we shouldn't have a hundred and five thousand on the budget. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Zarnik, could you please let the trustee know how much the amount would be for the sewer, um, project that we were talking about that you explained? I'm sure it was more than five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, it was in the tune of millions to get the project.
I didn't hear you. Which, how much?
Millions.
Well, I'm going by what you, uh, have in here, there's two projects, and they total up to five hundred eighty-two thousand. But regardless of, if it's millions or whatever, we have money in the sewer fund. We could use some of that money to fix whatever you have to do, at least five hundred eighty-two thousand dollars worth, so.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask Mohaw to confirm how much we have in the sewer fund?
Sure.
You combined balance and up to date water sewer.
Combined balance and up to eight, the water sewer fund is approximately about seventy-nine thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, you said seventy-nine thousand?
Yes, sir.
Definitely water fund.
What's that sewer?
Water sewer.
Water sewer.
Combine, I, yeah. Now, you, you gave me paper, uh, the other day when I was going to say seven hundred and fifty-six thousand was in the sewer fund.
It could be confusing that with the general fund.
I'm not confusing with anything, I've got it from Mohaw.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We have in general fund, but not in water sewer fund.
Okay.
Any other questions from Mrs. Zanick?
No, that's, that's it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Trustee Brewer? Yes?
I just, for my own purposes, I wanted to understand what your concerns were with the Osland grant. I, I didn't get that, sorry.
The Osland grant is that we have a hundred and five thousand that we already got in two thousand and fifteen, and it's still on the budget. You know, it's put in the budget for two thousand and twenty-eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, it's a hundred and five thousand on there. So, I was wondering, why is it still there?
Because it still exists.
No, thirty-two thousand of it, of it is spent.
Okay, but the money still exists, we can't, until it's been done, we can't just wipe it off the books.
You can wipe thirty-two thousand off the books.
Okay. Um, reports of departments, finance and administration, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board of trustees. I, I have no report.
Thank you.
Sewer Mal.
Fire Department, um, trustee, trustee, he'll be there tomorrow. He'll be, he'll be, he'll be in the village hall tomorrow. Fire Department, Mr. Chief Alston Ray.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Over the period from April eighteenth through May second, fire department responded to forty-seven calls, thirteen fire alarms, five vehicle accidents, twelve ambulance assists, two gas leaks, three CO wells, four auto aids to other, to other communities, one vehicle fire, one vehicle leaking gas, three structural fires. Mayor and Board, I was happy to see the return of the student government day. Students seemed excited, and it was good PR, and I'm glad we finally got back on those.
Thank you. Police Department, Chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. For the last two weeks, uh, we had five hundred and twenty-four calls for service with eight arrests. Case of interest on April twenty-fourth, officers responded to the, uh, with the Sawak Village Fire Department to a possible arson at Crosswood Department, two-six-hundred Marigold. Upon arrival, witnesses stated they heard a gunshot prior to the department fire. Once the fire was struck, the search of the department yielded the recovery of a handgun. Weapon was taken as evidence and sent to the, sent to the Illinois State Police Crime Lab for analysis. This is now an ongoing investigation. On April twenty-fifth, officers responded to assist an ambulance call at the residence located on seventeen-hundred block of two-twenty-third Street, only to find an individual to be unresponsive. Sergeant Langen, who was the first officer on the scene, began to administer CPR to the victim. The unresponsive individual appeared to be a victim of a drug overdose. Narcan was administered with negative results. The ambulance transported the victim to St. Marguerite Hospital where the victim was pronounced. On May first, officers received a call from the Fairway Grocery Store, about an offender attempting to leave with unpaid food items. Upon arrival, offenders apprehended an offender. The manager stated the offender entered the store and grabbed food items and attempted to leave without paying. When the manager tried to stop the offender, he pulled a knife on the, and threatened the manager. Once at the police station, the detectives took over the case and contacted the state's attorney's office. After several days, uh, the offender, uh, who had an extensive arrest record, uh, was eventually charged with armed robbery, aggravated battery to a store merchant, and two counts of retail theft from other, uh, stores that he had merchandise from on his possession. So was a banner two weeks. The Illinois Distracted Driving Awareness Week, uh, Traffic Safety Campaign, which we participated in, yielded, uh, over a dozen tickets for distracted driving violations alone. Last year, the Driving Awareness Week efforts resulted in over eighteen thousand citations. Uh, this year's totals are not yet available, but law enforcement authorities hope to surpass last year's results. Sawak Village Police Department participated again in the quarterly drug drop-off, which was held on April twenty-eighth, the same day of, of the pickup day. Uh, this was our most successful collection that we had since we began collecting in two thousand and fifteen. I'm, I'm happy to say that we collected well over a hundred and twenty pounds of unused and unwanted prescription drugs that won't end up in a landfill or the water system. I'd like to thank everybody who dropped off their medicine, and we will definitely participate with the next collection when it is announced. And, uh, it's been a long time coming. We've got a couple of commendations for some of our officers. One, uh, State's Dear Chief Kowalski, on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, the Steger Police Department, with the assistance of numerous surrounding agencies, conducted a drug and arson search at Blue Trail High School located in our community. Chad Fredrickson and his canine partner Falco assisted in performing the search. Keeping our children safe in a drug-free school campus is a constant challenge for law enforcement as well as school administrators. Like any form of drug abuse prevention or arson, the best approach is to have deterrence consistently visible, mental, in the successful search of the school, resulting in a safe, drug-free, and arson-free environment for our children. Chad Fredrickson and his canine partner Falco are to be commended for their dedication and commitment in assuring our schools remain safe and drug-free. Please extend my personal gratitude to Chad Fredrickson and his canine partner Falco for their assistance in this endeavor and the commitment to duty they displayed in responding to our needs. Sincerely, Deputy Chief Patrick Ross, Rossi, uh, Steger Police Department. And lastly, I received an email. Dear Chief Kowalski, I am writing this letter to express my profound gratitude to you, your department, and especially Officers Xylus and Huffnagle. Today I called for assistance at one of our properties located at two-twenty-two-hundred block of Merrill Streets. Officers Xylus and Huffnagle responded to the call. They acted with the utmost professionalism and care in the situation. They were able to successfully rectify a situation, cleared the property of an offender, and then took the time to thoroughly search the home for the presence of any weapons or illegal substances, thus allowing the home to be restored to a safe environment. The quick, the quick response time and the professionalism displayed were exemplary. Thanks, thank you to you and your department. You are truly an asset to the people and the village of Sawak Village. Sincerely, Ted Maris, President, BTM Realty, Wild Oak Properties, JTM Realty. That ends my report.
Thank you. Public Works, Director Kevin Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items here, it's been about three weeks since I reported. Uh, we had, uh, some issues during the winter time at an address at twenty-sixty-six, two-seventeenth Place. Um, it ended up being a few of the service saddles on the north side of town that we're having a lot of problems with. Um, staff also had repairs at two water main breaks, uh, eighteen-three-nine, two-twenty-third Street, and one at two-two-four-one-zero-Yates Avenue, where a section of nine feet of main had been replaced. Um, we're continuing to do upgrades, prepared for the roadwork on two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street and Cornell. Um, our, one of the locations that we, we placed the valve was two-two-two-four-one-Jeffrey Avenue and two-twenty-second Place, it's on the corner. Uh, that is a new main shut-off valve that would, that assisted us in replacing the main shut-off valve and the fire hydrant at eighteen-oh-one, two-twenty-third Street. This is all part of the two-twenty-third Street and Cornell roadwork. Um, we'll be shifting our work due to some of our spring and summer work that we're doing currently right now, but our next replacement location will be two-twenty-third Street and Cornell, and then we'll shift it from there to a, a location on two-hundred-and-twenty-three Third Street between Yates and Strasburg School. Uh, staff also has been out on the north and south side with the shut-off list. The lists appear, at least the last couple have been, been reduced. Um, the north side was a hundred and two, the south side a hundred and thirty, um, went through the list pretty, pretty quickly. Hydrant flushing is complete on the north side. Uh, we did find several new hydrants on the north side that were damaged. Uh, we'll be putting that together with some more information. Hopefully, uh, during the budget process, they'll understand why I'll be asking for more money. That's why I'll be reporting a little bit. Uh, repairs on both of the trucks that we had out, our nineteen-ninety dump trucks, uh, we had some framework on the front plower years. Both of those trucks are repaired, some brake work on both of those trucks, gas tank work, um, steering boxes, front-end work, uh, but they are all repaired and back online, so we should be good for a little while. Um, this will also, uh, we're, excuse me, um, we are also doing work on our lawnmowers. We had two mowers that are out. All the other mowers are, are currently out, and, uh, the work will continue, and when we hire our part-time help, that will, uh, assist us. Uh, chipping has started. Branches must be out no later than May thirteenth to be picked up, no exceptions. Um, some tree removals were started on two-hundred-and-twenty-first between Chappelle and Sawak Trail. About eight trees were removed. Uh, we are also working on Charlotte Court. Uh, there will be four trees that would be moved over there. These are locations where residents have been complaining for several years, um, about the older trees and some of the ash trees. So, our goal is to remove some of these trees as quickly as we can along the way when we're chipping. Um, staff has also been out with Apavo complaints. Uh, we've addressed some of the areas with the complaints, uh, some of those areas where I applied to twenty-first, um, Logistics Center, and also Carlisle. We had several complaints in Carlisle. The road out there, the surface is in pretty bad shape, uh, when we did some of our upgrades to our wellhouse. Uh, so we do have a lot of Apavo work to do out there, and later on, we will be getting into some of the cutouts to do, uh, bigger replacements when our, uh, part-time help starts. Um, also, staff was, uh, was out checking old water main break digs. Uh, during the winter time, we had quite a bit from November on. Um, they were out checking to adjust driveways and stuff that has settled down. Um, as the budget process goes through, we will start to work on the landscaping and some of the concrete and asphalt work that comes along with it. Um, the final draft, uh, for the ballfield upgrade for the Osland grant, uh, looks like it is put together. We're preparing for a meeting on five fifteen, which is the pre-construction meeting, and that will give us, uh, the direction of the timeframe, and, uh, public works staff will then at that time, uh, start to do some demo, and that will also slow some of our work down because we will use our staff to save money on the grant. Uh, but we will be there probably for a week straight, uh, removing the stuff that we have to take on. Uh, we still have several repairs at the wellhouses. We are waiting for parts right now on one of the, the air stripper blowers. Um, we have plenty else to back it up, but, uh, we have an impeller that went bad. Order is in the shop and repaired right now. Should be back next week, and that one will be back online. Um, let's see. Um, over the winter time and, uh, in the last several months, we've been getting a lot of complaints about, uh, signages leaning into the roadway or a lot of graffiti on the signs. It seems like on the north side, we have a lot more damage on the signs. So, we have had, we have had staff out replacing signs, and we asked residents if they see anything going on, any damage to any signs, anybody even messing with them, throwing stuff at them, to please call the police department. Um, it costs a lot of money and it's a damage to village property. Um, and, uh, just so you'll know, we are replacing, we are placing the village sticker signs out. They should be out, uh, by the end of the week, and, uh, village stickers have to be displayed by July first. Uh, let's see. The final, uh, punch list for Windpack, we, uh, just went through a little bit of the punch list, and the final trees were planted out there. Looks like everything is, uh, going well. They still have to come back and do a little bit of, uh, sod work, some of it washed away during one of the rain events we had, but that should be completed within a week. Uh, also, uh, let's see here. One of my concerns I have lately is, uh, we've been getting a lot of complaints from residents, uh, about the parks. We've had, in the past, we've had a lot of problems with the, the youth going over there and damaging the slides. In the beginning, it was them burning slides at a couple of the parks. Now, it's them hacking on the slides with whatever objects. All of the parks no longer have plastic slides in them due to this problem. Recently, we've gotten a report from a resident on Clyde and two-eighteenth Park, that kids have been in the park at nighttime, and they did a lot of damage to the fence, and they're also damaging and burning the inside of the actual, uh, park equipment now with lighters, writing their names and doing different things inside those parks. Um, so we're asking for help from any resident who lives around these parks, the police, if they see any children in the park after dusk, dusk to dawn, they should call the police, and the police will help us get them out of the parks in the middle of the evening. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I wanted to correct something I just said, uh, to Robinson Engineer. Um, I misquoted, I found my paper. But, um, since May of, uh, since we came aboard in May of two thousand and seventeen, uh, we have collected one million five hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents in water revenue. In sewer revenue, we collected seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's a total of two million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents in the water sewer fund that we have collected since May. But, and the balance, um, as of five, one, is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Now, my, my question is you, we got, and all this money, we get two million dollars. We had two million dollars since May, and all these unfunded mandates come up. We have more than enough money, that's, that's probably got right, to fix some of these things, but it seems like to me that the water fund is being diverted to other projects. So, what I'm saying is, if you, if we got two million dollars, you know we're gonna get at least two million dollars for the year coming up, you might wanna tell, well, we know you need five hundred eighty-two thousand, so we wanna set aside five hundred eighty-two thousand to get the sewer fixed, because we know at least we're gonna have that mu- much money in, instead of getting a loan. That's, that's the way I wanna phrase it. So, I just wanted to correct that. Two million dollars is, you know, two million dollars.
Um, Economic Development Director, Joseph Wizwad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Seventy-six percent of the businesses now have their business licenses as of today. One business sadly has closed due to the retirement of the owner. We wish John from Villa de Pizza well in his retirement. The remainder of the businesses were sent notices, and the, their licenses are late, and we encourage all businesses to obtain their license before May first. We have several inquiries for businesses, uh, that we expect to come on board here in the next few months. One business will be, uh, returning property that currently is exempt, uh, to the tax roll, so that'll be a, a nice welcome. To date, we've issued over a hundred and sixteen business and contractor licenses in this cycle. Uh, the board has before it tonight a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Laurel Four Seasons Lawn Care Service to mow a hundred and twelve vacant homes. The money for the lawn service, uh, lawn maintenance will be reimbursed to the village from a grant through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. It should also be noted that the garage garbage on those lots will also be remediated, and we had a kickoff meeting with the contractor, uh, Mr. Lee. Uh, they're very eager to get this, uh, project underway. The seventy-five thousand dollar grant was awarded to the village earlier this year, and in addition to the hundred and twelve homes, uh, we will be maintaining, there are additional sixty homes that we will be removing dead trees and securing, and eight that are targeted for demolition. We'll be working with, uh, Director Weller on ways in which we can, uh, take a look at addressing some of the dead tree issues, um, in the next few weeks. Um, I'd like to, oh, I'd like for the next, uh, committee of the whole meeting, um, to have a discussion on a resolution accepting the grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. We'll be closing on the property, uh, where the old laundromat was on Sawak Trail. Uh, the village sold that property to Tony Abazir before the end of the month. That should be closing. Uh, the boundary survey was ordered, uh, today. Um, as soon as that comes in, we should be, uh, good to close. As you recall, this was a cash deal, there are contingencies on it. Uh, Mr. Abazir executed the contract and deposited the money with the village attorney. Um, so that's all been taken care of. Finally, I would like to welcome trustee Ronald Carter to the village board and look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Got a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, I talked to you about this, uh, before. I gave you a copy of the, uh, uh, I guess, the grant for, uh, in that's the Cook County...
Excuse me, excuse me, just one second. Don't forget Saturday, guys. Did everyone get their, uh, schedule?
Yep. We're all good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I gave you a copy where they had, uh, well, we had got a grant for the logistics center. I think it's like two hundred and sixty-four thousand back and forth, and, and just finished it up, uh, recently this year. And my comment to you, uh, at time is, and you showed me that they were going to do additional roadwork near Logistics Center. And my comment still is to you, is that we have, do, you have to, a very good job getting this grant for the Logistics Center and their roads. But my question is that, are there any grants out there that would can fix the sidewalks and roads here in the village? Because I'm thinking that the Logistics Center just, um, announced a ten million dollar expansion, seems like they got money, they can fix their own road, but we're, we're like they got money, they can fix their own road, but we're, we're spending time and money, I'm serious, time and money, to get them another road fixed, so it's not logical, you know, financially logical for us to be helping them out, when they should be helping us out.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Not a great, great guy.
Right, the village engineer submitted a grant application to CMAP to do a survey for the roads, we're expecting that, answer on that for July of sometime, there hasn't been really a survey done on the roadways and their condition, they put a grant request out there, and Mr. Zarnik filled out that information, we were talking about this during that whole process of the logistics center improvements. The grant that, that the village had received prior was for the improvements of Windpack Way. Those improvements were just completed, and will eventually get paid out of that grant money. The grant that we're applying for is above and beyond that, and goes beyond the scope of the original work that Windpack Way did, so the expansion of Windpack Way, you know, that's what we're looking at doing, we're not looking to do the construction phase of it, the grant that we applied for, and the money that we're, we're not getting the money when we rephrase that. The engineering services that were getting provided to us from Cook County are going for engineering, so we're doing a lot of the engineering so we can be prepared to apply for the grant through the state of Illinois next year sometime.
Well, that's good, but what about us?
If, if there are any grant, you know, grants out there, I mean, we're definitely looking for, for all grant opportunities out there, so.
Is that any of your report? Okay, reports to committees and commissions, our beautification committee, trustee Uli Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Effective yesterday, I put in my resignation as chairperson on beautification, that committee cannot be run by one person, it can't, there's too much to do. So I have decided that I'm going to remove myself from that, and I want people to know that that particular committee is volunteer basis only, so it's not like if I was the chairperson of that, that I would be paid for that, because it's never been paid if a trustee was over it. So I just wanted to let people know. Also, I, yesterday, had closed out our account, we were with US Bank, and I, whatever money that we did with fundraisers, I gave to the finance director, it was in the amount of over $500. So whoever takes it over, you will have something to work with. So, that ends my report.
Thank you. Senior Advisory Council, Mr. Emmett Farmer, chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is this Thursday, May 10th, at 5:00 PM, and all are welcome in the senior center. Also, right after that, Director Alan Favorit of the Emergency Management Agency is having a smart meeting from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, so we'll be trying to get out of, of his way, so we won't be long, going from 5, hopefully we'll be through before he starts the meeting. So we'll start on time, and all are welcome again. Our upcoming CETA programs will be made 14th to 21st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, which will feature help with, of course, your utilities and insurance wireless, with free government phones will be there on these dates, and every Friday from here on out in the mornings and afternoon. Refer to the senior advisory council calendar for exact times and that he'll be there. And all that will be posted, you know, on the calendar. I do have copies of calendars that are being posted for this week, for May. Also, information on Tuesday is scheduled for every, second Tuesday of each month, and ceramic is every Wednesday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Please don't forget our game night, every Thursday, Friday from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and all events scheduled on our calendar. Also, the senior advisory committee is working on a trip into life of the seniors, to the Four Winds Casino, and we will be finalizing all the details, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. And here is our calendar.
Just asking about that.
Can I ask a quick question? Mr. Farmer? Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Mr. Farmer, just for clarification purposes, with CETA, they're pretty good cadence with having them in here a couple times a month, I just want to be clear, though, that the programs that CETA offers are available to all residents, and not even just residents, but Illinois residents who qualify, not just seniors, even though it's the senior advisory council that's sponsoring them. True?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And you should have got this, CETA canceled for May 14th, they won't be here, remember I gave you a sent you the text? They, they canceled for the 14th of May, they'll be here on the 21st. Because they had a schedule in conflict. I sent, the mayor asked a copy, I sent it to him, too. Okay, I sent it to Paulie, too.
Thank you. Reports to trustees and standing committees, public service committee, trustee Bernice Brewer.
You pass this down, please. Before you, I'm giving you a draft proposal of part one and two, one for everybody. And, I'm sorry. How many did I give you? You know, five, I'll get some more copies. Okay, well, I'll give the rest of the copies later. One of my tasks was to find out how much to raise the water rates, but we took it in two parts, and this is just for reference only, it's a draft, can you look it over, and we would like your comments. On here is some of our suggestions on what we should do to sort of make the financial burden of residents a little easier, and one is suggesting, the biggest thing is, is to separate the water from the, from the garbage bill. We have, we don't get any financial incentives from the Republic for doing their billing, you know, we just do it for free, because we obligated in their contract. So I talked to the mayor about separating, he said that was a good idea, so that's part one that we're working on, you'll get the part two that addresses water rates later. One of the things that we talked about is, the biggest thing is reconciliations of the billing process, even though the Republic receives a list of vacant buildings every month, nobody actually looks at it, not the, not the people in Sauk Village, and not the Republic, so there's no reconciliation going. They have been overbilling us for a while, and then we, we just, I don't know where they come up with the 2,695 users, they bill us every month. That's telling me they, they're not looking at what we're sending them. And the figures you gave me, Mr. Mayor, May 28th, they didn't, I couldn't use them at all, because
May 28th?
May 28th, you gave me a bunch of numbers.
Real?
Yeah. For, May, March 28th.
Oh, okay.
March 28th, you gave me a bunch of numbers that represent the users for the garbage bill, but those numbers are not correct, so I couldn't use those. So as you go through here and look at it, you'll look at it maybe in about two weeks, and maybe you have suggestions and stuff, but we recommend that we change the billing process to split the bill, and also coincide with the, when Republic bills us, and that new billing period starts in October. If you go through, there's also attachment on there where it shows how much we've been paying every year since November 2015, and, and in the last year, I think Republic owes us like $22,000, that's only going by the figures that was given to me by Moha. Now, the sheet that's on top that shows 635,000, that's what Republic sends in the bill, we pay it, no, no reconciliations, we don't say we need adjustments or anything. Now, now residents move in and out of village all the time, and there should be some adjustments somewhere, we don't have one. I have one adjustment in September of 2016, and that's not right, something's, something's not right the way, the way they bill us, and we've been knowing that, because that's why we owe them 380,000 for towns. But take a look at it, you got any suggestions, give me a call, write me something, or email me, and we'll just go from there.
Trustee Brewer, I have a comment, so about, a couple months ago, I asked Community Development, did they do a comparison of what actually we build versus what Republic says that they show as being vacant homes, and they said they do. I actually have a document that shows that every time they go and update it with like different little codes that says vacant or not vacant or whatever. You might be able to help find information with Community Development somewhere, they can give you like a start or a guide. I know that is being done, but that was two months ago, if it's being updated, I'm not sure, but that's a start.
Well, wait a minute, I've been collecting this, this data for almost a year, now, the information that I got only shows last year when they were actually counting the numbers. Now, according to Moha, I couldn't get that information this year, they're stuck with that 2,695 houses, they don't care what you say and, or what we get, they only gonna charge us for 2,695 houses every month. There has to be some kind of adjustments to the bills, because people move in and out, and they're not looking at it, and Sauk Village is not looking at it. In addition to that, they charge us two cents per household, which is not in the contract, is all, I think they call it compliance fee, and I, and the copy of the contract I had does not call for it, but they charge us anyway, that's like $592 a year that they put on residents, I don't know why, but that's the information I got. But I have a whole stack of vacant houses, and if the Republic would look at it, if, when it was sent to them, or if we would look at it, when we, when they come back, we'll know that maybe 10 houses shouldn't be on here, or 20 houses, nobody's doing that. So it's very important to get the number count right, okay? And the information that the mayor did, I couldn't use it, but the, I just, why I only did last year for a number count, because I, I got the actual numbers from Moha, and I got the pink book and everything, but this year, according to Moha, they don't keep number counts, so that's a problem, somebody needs to do, take a close look at that invoice every time it comes in, every month, and delete or add those houses, you know, so we can get an accurate count of what's going on. And another thing you might find interesting is that, once a person, like a resident's water is cut off, Sauk Village gets the revenue from the garbage, you know, once they do a payment plan or whatever, but it's never sent to Republic, we keep, we maintain that money itself, it is never sent to Republic, we keep that money. I don't know why, I, and, and that's another thing, that, that's why the invoices should be adjusted or something, but they actually, Sauk Village actually keeps some money. So there's, there's a whole bunch of questions, but this is what we came up with, you know, so.
There's a couple of things.
And I'm sorry, one more thing, I talked to Moha, and all the figures are correct.
Separation of garbage and water bills by contract cannot happen. The copy of the contract, I'm sure you, I've given it out, and I'm sure you can, it's no problem, but they will not, we have to collect the money from the garbage.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
We don't have all the personnel to do the difference, in other words, they want X amount. Every month, yes, we do, we try to go down and find out who hasn't paid, but to make the statement that when we get the back money doesn't go to Public, yes it does, and I want you to let me know tomorrow, whenever you can, to show me where we're not paying Republic for past due amount. That's my, that's, that's, that's what you said, so that's the only question I have, but I'm not gonna debate back and forth.
I'm not gonna debate back and forth.
Okay, so that's the only question I have, that's the question I need to see, I need you to show me where, when we get late payments, that that portion that goes to Republic then I get it.
According to what Moha told me, they said it's not sending, so I can't get any thinking, you're not gonna let them give it to me.
Trustee, did you create this, or did Moha create this?
I created the database, he just checked it. Because, you know, each month they have a shut-off list, and it tells you how much they get in from the figures, and if you look on the report, it doesn't show anything for shut-off, because it would have, I would have another comment say, well, we get this money for shut-off, but if you look through there, it, it shows, like, say for instance on 2015, November 2015, the amount collected is like $33,000, and the village service was 1,000, and what, we paid them 32,000, okay? And Republic asked for 45, so that means that, to me, Moha said that there was a bunch of residents that didn't pay, so that's what they paid, because that's what they collected in, actually collected in, and the rest of it is on collection now. Moha said something different, we need to get together with him.
If I may, I don't believe we had entered into the new contract yet at that point, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, wasn't that later into 2016 when we did the contract extension with them? So in 2015, I'm sure there was no reconciliation being done, and I think it was after the contract extension that that agreement was put in place, that both organizations would start to do a reconciliation. So as you get to a more current month, you should see a significant change in what we're charging and billing for versus what we are being billed for from Republic. The other thing is, you have to keep in mind, when Republic is billing us, they don't know who's paying versus not paying, so we are paying Republic upfront, and if we're not getting the money as a village from the residents that we've built, then we're the ones that are out the money, not Republic. So, I think as, because the last month you've got on here is, what, October of 2016, so as you
October, I got September 2017.
Okay, yeah, but I, you don't have the complete thing filled out, you just have the top row on that second page, right? So, the amount billed, the collections, what's been collected, isn't all filled out for 2017?
That's because I didn't get any data for it. They only, at that point, starting in October, November 2016, we paid whatever Republic sent in. If they sent us invoice in for 52,983,070 a month, that's what we paid, there was no adjustments or anything to the invoice.
Right.
That's why I'm saying we need more reconciliation, or some kind of, somebody to do some adjustments to the invoices. We have no way of turning, whatever Republic sends in the bill, we pay it, we know we don't have that many houses, we just pay it. Somebody should be sending Republic something, or saying this is not right, and nobody's doing it.
Well, and to trustee Grant's point, Community Development was supposed to be doing that, as was Republic, it was supposed to be both organizations having that dialogue, at least on a quarterly basis.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, and I said it, for goodness, nobody was looking at the invoices when they came in, and we losing a lot of money that way.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree that that's a possibility, but I just want to be clear that Republic's getting probably more than they should be, and they are getting paid for the, the, you know, the past due slash collections that we have to deal with, because they, they don't even know about that, they assume everybody's paying their bill when they send that invoice to us, so it's really on us then to make sure we're making ourselves home, because we're paying them no matter what, because we have to, because otherwise we go into default and owe that 389,000.
I agree with you, but the point is that we need somebody to do it, they're overbilling us, I do believe, you know?
Totally.
And not only that, and that for compliance fees, too, there's nothing in the contract that even vaguely reserve a compliance fee, I don't know why they put it on the backs of Sauk Village residents, but it's there.
Is that
The point is that we're not doing, I do diligence, and neither is Republic.
Can we, trustees, can we, since this is a good topic, and Can we, uh, trustees, can we, uh, since this is a, is a good topic and it's, would you like to do a presentation next week at the Committee of a Whole Meeting?
I'd like your comments first.
I'm just asking, would you like to do this at a Committee of a Whole Meeting? Uh, and, um, bring this and we can ask the questions? Um, we still have a few more things to take care of, but I'm just, we're going back and forth.
Okay, well, yeah, I told him, I said, you can look at it and keep it till next week.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, could you like to have this on the Committee of a Whole Meeting Committee, meeting next week?
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, I didn't just be here, I would've got your comment. I need two more.
Yeah, I, you can give me the one, I'll give it to Mr. Carter. Okay, then, then in your report.
Oh. I also talked to, um, the treasurer about the April 24th, uh, accounts payable. Cause I had a bunch of questions about it and one of the main things that I had asked about is that, I didn't bring a copy of that, is that when she did the treasurer report for April 24th, she had a, a negative 165-
Okay.
On there. And, uh, she was explaining to me that, uh, uh, it shows a negative 165 because the, um, expenditure came in. But I told her, I said, you know, I don't think that's right because if you're doing a treasurer report, this is revenue, it should show positive. Now, if she wanted to take off the, uh, because we got the, uh, paid out the money, she should have made another column. It, you know, for a novice, like, I was looking at it, I said, well, how could, how did we get to 165,000? Something's wrong with that. It's on the, uh, treasurer report for April 24th and it's also on there for 111,000 dollars, that shows a negative too. It's, it seems to me that, you know, if you, if you're doing a collector's report, that's revenue coming in and it should show revenue coming in, not negative in those two spots. So she said she was gonna give me the, uh, the invoices to show where the money came in and what was dispersed, but I'm still waiting on that, so.
Do you want that to also be on your report for next week?
No, if I get the invoices, I don't need it. So if you could ask her to give me the invoices, I, you know-
You can ask the treasurer.
Already been asking her for a week.
Okay, well, like I said, we, you, you, I'm sure you can come in, for me to do that, I'm, you can ask the treasurer, you have-
I have asked.
Pardon me?
I have asked the-
Okay.
Treasurer for the report.
Um, is there anything else on the public service?
Uh, let me see. No, I think that's it.
Budget and finance, Trustee Roger Grant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week I did provide the board with a copy of, uh, finance policy procedures. Uh, next week I ask for it to be on the committee meeting agenda so we can have discussion on it. I welcome any feedback, uh, any questions, concerns, and I hope that we can pass it, uh, the following-
Can I hear you?
Hope that we can pass the following board meeting. Also, uh, we're working on a few, uh, policies that we provide to the board for approval in the near future. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee, I mean, uh, Madam Plurk, could you put that on the agenda for next week?
Can I just make a quick comment? It's a lot of reading for us all between that and the budget right now, that you might not see everything on my feedback by next Tuesday.
Uh, if we get a consensus that we need to extend it, that's fine, uh-
Does anyone in the board, would you like to have attendance to the following, two weeks from now? I'm sorry, three weeks from now?
You could, yeah, you could spend the garbage, okay, so, I should have the other part ready too.
Heartmate?
You could spend, uh, want to extend, Rogers, you could spend mine too.
No, he said it was a lot of reading for him. Yours is no reading, there's nothing for them to read, I'm bad.
Yeah, it's just that really big pad.
Right.
Well, I prefer it here, you know, three weeks anyway.
So you, you don't want yours on the next week?
Uh-uh, that's too much.
Means two weeks from now?
No.
Okay. All right. Parks and Recreation, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I put you, I put you like a census to extend it.
That we were waiting until, okay, I'll put it this way. Instead of asking, I'll wait until, um, I'll ask these trustees two weeks, well, three weeks from now if they're ready to have it. So I, I'll ask them two weeks from now, if they would like, at the next board meeting, would they like to have it put on the following week? Okay, well, it'll be June 5th.
That's right.
All right, um, so yes, trustee, we'll do it. Uh, the next board meeting, I'll ask, we'll ask to see if we can have it put on. Uh, Parks and Recreations, um, I have no report right now. Um, waiting to see what happens with the budget before I move anything forward. Uh, but they do have basketball Mondays and Fridays at the gym from 3 to 6. And just a little footnote, we are planning to have a couple of, um, activities this summer. Um, you'll be notified well in advance and I'm hoping I can get volunteers out for that. And then also, um, with the beautification committee, I just wanted to say, I'm also would like to see if anyone would like to volunteer for that. I guess there's still some things I would like to have done. So if you're interested in volunteering, and you know anyone that is interested in volunteering, uh, for the beautification, uh, please let me know, I'm here every day, uh, from 9 to 5. Um, housing in the governmento, trustee Tate, you have your name? Okay. Oh.
No report.
No, we have, no, he said no report. Orders Review Committee, trustee Little Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Orders Review Committee will meet on May 14th at 6:30 PM here in the Rotunda. We will be going over the false alarm ordinance and, um, we're going to actually, I think, meet with the chief before that to go over some of the concerns. We'll be going over the water rehab, it was just, uh, reworded and so I want to run it through the committee before I put it before the board, so. That ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Beth Zupan.
Uh, the committee did meet last week and due to scheduling conflicts, instead of meeting the first Wednesday in June, we are gonna meet the second Wednesday in June, which would be the 13th. Again, it's 6 o'clock here at Village Hall. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Farmer for mentioning the fact that Emergency Management Agency is gonna be hosting, uh, the SMART meeting this month, that's next Thursday night as he indicated. This is just one of the mutual aid networks that, uh, we participate with, uh, as a community. SMART, for those of you who don't know, stands for Suburban Mutual Assistance Response Team. And that's something that, uh, they pretty religiously attend their meetings on a monthly basis to get information. You know, there's a lot of information sharing, training opportunities that they get from that. So it's a good, uh, source of information for them. And it's, it's good for us to have the visibility with hosting that on occasion as well. So that's, uh, happening next Thursday. And then lastly, I'm gonna just mention, I know you've, Mayor, referenced it, um, sorry, I have two more things. Uh, quickly, Saturday morning, the board is having a budget meeting at 9 AM. Public is welcome, you can't comment, but you can certainly sit and listen to what's being discussed. Uh, that would be here at 9 AM this Saturday, the 12th. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind, um, trustee Brewer, if you look at our current budget, uh, for the water and sewer funds, I know you were talking about how much money we've collected, but, um, you, you didn't mention the expenditures that we've had throughout the budget year, uh, including things like maintenance, repair, uh, staff, um, employee wages and benefits and all the line items that are in there on those pages. I can reference you to page, uh, 60, uh, actually page 59 is the revenue projections versus page 60 and 61 is the expenses. That's the water fund. The sewer fund is on page 63 and 64. And that concludes my report.
I understand, I understand that, um-
Does she have a question for her?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that we have expenditure for the water fund, but not enough money has been put into the village for infrastructure repair, fire hydrant replacement, or anything like that. Some of this money should be set aside for the people here and not just used up for stuff that, that has absolutely nothing to do with water.
Trustee, trustee, I asked you if you have a question for her, not a-
I'm gonna finish my question.
What question is it?
The, the question is, if we got $2 million, don't you think some of that should have been set aside for infrastructure repair, fire hydrant improvement, stuff like that? It's all water related. You collecting water fund for the day-to-day operation of this village and it's not supposed to be used for that. It's supposed to be used for some kind of improvement to the water system.
Okay.
And some of that is here, the numbers that you're wanting are not supported by the current revenues, which I think is part of-
Exactly.
-what you're committed.
Exactly.
Um, next item, I just wanted to, um, and we did congratulate trustee, um, Carter into our fold. He's probably wondering, what did he get himself involved here? But, um, he doesn't have a committee yet, but if he has anything he would like to say at this time, now's the time to, uh, to say it, Mr. Carter.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm observing and learning. And when I get through observing and learning, I'll start putting some hard work. There's a lot of things I, I see in here that, uh, need to be addressed, but right now I don't have that, uh, that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor into entering a green agreement with Law Four Seasons Long Care Service that we have from the, um, last week from the bed. The motion?
Second.
It was moved by trustee, Zupan, second by, what? Sent by trustee Grant, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Any questions? Madam Plurk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlining agreement with the state of Illinois and the villages of Saw Village appropriating funds for the 223rd Street Cornell, uh, Avenue Reservicing Project.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Yeah.
Madam Plurk?
Trustee Carter?
I'm sorry.
Trustee Carter, you can say yes, no, ask the same. Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Federal Access Equipment Cooperative Agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
So.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Can you give us a recap of this particular, um, motion?
This, it was, it's, um-
I have it, I just want you, can you give us a basic?
Okay, it was basically letting, um, us be able to, um, get equipment from a clearinghouse, for the village if we, if we need to be. In other words, if we have the money to buy it. But it gives us the, it gives the, us to authority to shop. And then it lets us know how much we have and how much equipment that we have. Madam Plurk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve all accounts payable and disbursed as dated 5/8 in the amount of 451,253.04.
So.
Trustee second.
Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Question? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like a copy of all Dr. Strouder's, um, invoices that's on this, uh, accounts payable. And also in addition to that, I would like a copy of all old, old assistant and staff's invoice. I'd like to see what they're still billing us for, cause they seem like they still on the aging report, this is-
Yeah. Uh, if I could get a copy of all those, um, invoices?
Was that your-
You'll have to four years, huh?
That's your question? Was that your question?
Yeah. Can I?
Yes.
May I have a copy of all those invoices?
Whenever you come in, I'll, I'll show you the invoices and the, um, the invoices.
I want a copy, I just, I, I need a-
I will show you the invoices.
And then I can copy them?
Any other questions?
I know I'm not, but trustee Brewer submitted recordings to me yesterday and-
You don't?
Those were the ones on April 20th. No, those were the ones on April 24th, these are new ones.
Trustee, I, like I stated before-
May 8th.
When you come in, you can get a, you can, you can see those invoices.
I need a copy.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Madam Plurk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
As staying.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
And trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.